All in favor, please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Alright, um, if everyone has a chance to look over the minutes, I will look for the motion. Motion for amendment. Mark, thank you. All in favor, very special, sorry.
I missed the first item and it's the last.
Okay.
The first item, this says legislature should ask that it be about the use of Roundup while we are trying to promote tourism and it just doesn't seem to make any sense.
It isn't how it was stated, but... So, I just, I hope everybody read it and thought, and understood it, but I didn't, so...
I said that, and I'm sure it's recorded somewhere, that if we're trying to promote tourism, why are we using one, a no carcinogen monopolized by Monsanto? And we're the only industrialized nation using it. Europe, Canada, all 300,000-plus mines. Lawsuits have already began and it looks like we've been strafed down the sides of the road by Agent Orange. We're losing the bird population, as they reported from Cornell, at an unprecedented rate. So, they, they claim that that is all part of our health. The health of the bird population is like the canary in the mine. So, I really think for the health of our workforce, the health of the community, we really need to look at not using Roundup. And that's how I stated it, so, to that effect. I just, you know, it just was kind of jumbled.
I mean, I would rather see it corrected or struck, okay? You know what I mean?
You have a motion for amendment then?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a motion just to strike it. I mean, I agree with you, but I just think it's promotion of tourism.
Well, I think we already wanted it on the records.
Yeah, I'd like it on the record.
I think it's gonna have that, if you want to make it to better reflect.
Okay, well then I won't, no, no motion. If he's caught or holed in his language, then...
Well, I mean, make the change.
That's right, I agree.
Just to clarify.
Jumbled.
I'd rather, you make a lot of good points, I'd rather have it make sense than it just doesn't make any sense to someone just reading that. It's like tourism about Roundup, but...
Alright, um, maybe also just not look for vote, all in favor? Any votes? Thank you. Okay, then if you would, we're going to move over to standard, take picture? Everybody wanna start first and then take a picture?
Just go ahead and take a picture.
I'll also take a picture.
Take a picture and then Jeff, Robert, if you have something to say, if you don't have something to say.
Come on now, okay.
Yep. I vote for most of the... I say here, dirt, Super Dirt Week proclamation.
Well, I like Super Dirt Week.
Nice ones come from...
Oh, yeah.
He does.
Absolutely.
Yeah, to look at me. Yeah, probably...
Right, you think...
Five, um... Yeah, no, uh, agencies, um, State, um, G S, um, D C, Parks, well, I guess Parks and then there's... There's one for Fisheries.
G S. D C, G S.
There's no one from the governor's office, unfortunately, there's, there's a big slowdown or something. A lot going on this week, there's...
You're gonna get down to the...
I, so, again, okay, the director for conservation, there. Uh, just, you know, vice, or the, or the New York State has toured, you know, the state archaeologists. There's different agencies here.
Actually, what else have we been keeping up with?
Um, what, you got the Secretary of Dirt Week? Oh, yeah, no. Well, I used to go because of fair, which was a fair, which is a machine. Yeah, that was a great... But it's, it has produced a lot of other opportunities.
Yes.
What do you mean?
Alright.
Who's next to you?
Yeah.
No, probably not.
No.
What's next?
That's right. That's right.
I will reconvene, thank you, everyone. Um, next on the agenda here is the proclamation for Super Dirt Week. Took a picture and I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. The Oswego County Legislature designates October 5th of 2019 to October 13th of 2019 as Super Dirt Week. Whereas the weekend of October 5th through 13th will mark our 48th year of Super Dirt Week in Central New York. And organizers and local officials will be celebrating the fourth running of this event in Oswego County. Oswego Speedway's renowned Steel Palace will host the main event with qualifying events held at other dirt tracks around Oswego County and Central New York. And over the course of the week, nearly 35,000 fans and more than 300 competitors will gather in Oswego County to participate, participate in this event. And fan sponsors and participants from 18 states and three countries will generate an estimated economic impact of more than $12 million from the various activities associated with Super Dirt Week. And fans and residents are encouraged to wear racing attire on Friday, October 11th, and to join in in the many events celebrating Dirt Car Racing Day in the city and county of Oswego. Now therefore be it resolved that James Blodrock, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, in concert with his colleagues throughout Oswego County, thus hereby proclaim the weekend of October 5th through the 13th of 2019, a Super Dirt Week in Oswego County, New York. And that together we welcome our Super, our Super Dirt Week visitors and urge our residents to join in the excitement of dirt car racing and the activities that Super Dirt Week brings to our communities. Uh, Jeff is here.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Uh, I really appreciate it. It's actually building year after year. We haven't made a big announcement about this because we don't want fans to turn themselves away. We want them to get hotel rooms or get resourceful, but camping is now sold out. We added 100 camping spots this year, so we're over 900 camping spots on that property. So, um, so ticket sales are going great and the fans are really starting to embrace Oswego. And, uh, we obviously are embracing it with the upgrades that we're making to the facility. We added more roads this year. We've added signage to help, uh, local authorities and if there is an emergency, we get to respond quickly. Um, just like if you were driving down the street in East 10th, I mean, we have road age and it has the spots in each, uh, each of the lots, so, um, it's a pretty cool deal. It is in the 48th year, I, I said this, uh, when I was, I don't know, in a previous meeting, but, in all the years that I've done it at the fairgrounds and there was the mystique and the, and the coolness and, you know, it was the fairgrounds, it was a mile, there's not many, there's only three mile tracks, two now left in the country, dirt tracks. The support here in Oswego County and in the city of Oswego is hand and fist above anything that we ever got done, done there, so we really appreciate it. A lot of you in this room were part of the first year, which was very intimidating. Thank you, Phil was very involved, I remember, Tim. But, uh, very intimidating and how, uh, yesterday the permits were actually issued a couple days ago. Our meeting was about five or six people, uh, whereas four years ago we had 20 people trying to solve last-minute issues, so, um, we appreciate it. So, Dirt Car Day, what Tim, uh, referred to, um, obviously the big day is on Sunday, that's the Super Bowl, that's the one that everybody wants to see, but Friday, October 11th, I brought some t-shirts, I'm gonna hand them out to everybody. We want to encourage everybody throughout town, retailers, workplace, schools, to allow everyone to wear motorsports and paint the town, just like if Syracuse was going to the final four. They do that all throughout Central New York. You know, we have the parade on Thursday, but Friday we have a special that's specific to Oswego residents and Oswego County residents. A family of four, uh, the two kids under 12 years old can go to the races for $25. It's buy one, get one free with the proof of Oswego residency, Oswego County residency. Kids 12 and under are free, college students are $10. We really try to make Friday night where if you're not there, you're missing something in Oswego and hopefully they come back to the big race on Sunday. But anyways, I'm talking too much, you guys all probably have much more important stuff to talk about in Super Dirt Week, but, uh, we're excited and, uh, thank you for everybody's support and everything that you've done to get us to this point and we're looking forward to many more successful years.
What time's the parade? One, one second.
Wednesday, Wednesday, 12 o'clock.
It's right through town.
Right through town, same route, uh, I don't think there's any reason to change it. I think people are starting to realize it, so yeah, right through town and, um, I guess it's down at Unico Street and I cross West First and on Wild Forest and then back up to City Line, so, back up to City Line, so, um, that's cool.
Do you do that anywhere else? Other places where you have dirt races that have the parade of drivers in town?
Uh, we do a parade of haulers, we don't do a parade of drivers, so...
That's unique to hear.
This is unique, uh, we did try a parade once in Syracuse and we, uh, we had five cars, so we tried it before, but, I mean, it's pretty cool. I drive the pace car, not because somebody else can't drive the pace car and then, or leave the parade. It's pretty simple, but I do it because I...
You like the flashy look of your stats.
So, one lump in the throat, you know, it's kind of like, you know, you're raising the trophy, you know, this gets started and the scene, the, the kids, the kids at 10th Street, they all, they come out of the school, oh my God, they're waving their checker flags, I'm like, that's why we do this. Sorry.
It's great, very good, thank you very much. Is there anything else, do you have any questions? Again, I want to thank you for all you do, I know, we appreciate it, the county and the city specifically as well, but this is a great event, it's really cool that this is in Oswego. Sometimes we take picture granted at racetrack up there, but never ever since then, people don't understand just how great it can be and I really appreciate all you put into it with partners. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I think the city should keep up the checker flags because it makes you feel like a winner as you drive down 104.
Great, thanks, I appreciate it.
Let me help you with your shirt.
Yeah. There's a mixture, you're gonna have to trade, there's largest and next to the largest, so just hand them out and if you go that way, I'll lose.
Like you said, I have largest. There's 10 of each, so if you get the wrong side, I'm sure you can trade with somebody.
It is.
Yes, you're dead.
No?
No, okay.
I'll take an extra. Yeah, there you go. Yep.
Oh, you got large. That's probably a good decision. Yeah.
You have another last one?
Okay. Well, great, wonderful.
Yes, very nice.
Move on to the next here, our next item on the agenda is a resolution EP1, which is a resolution authorizing an application for funding to support our Oswego River Access Project. Actually, Dave steps back over here, we'll have him give some update on that project where it stands. If you remember, it's a couple years in the making here, we talked about it a few times in the last couple years. The RFPs had come back in, it was the winner that was selected and there was a meeting just recently to discuss that project, so we are moving forward. Remember that's the project now, um, on 41 heading out of the city of Oswego, right there. Side of the old...
No, there's a previous, uh, block structure there in the old days that is going to become part of this kayak access. It's the only, it'll be the only kayak access, uh, on the Oswego River in that particular part of the blocks. So this is a grant application to supplement the grants we've already got for. I think D use identified another grant also later on, but this is simply to, uh, this grant requires that a resolution be passed in support of it, not all grants do. So this would be, it does, that's why we're, we're doing this now.
Of course. Yeah, Phil, is there, no doubt there's parking areas in that area, that's all gonna be, all way, all the open areas will be parking area, I remember what.
Uh, it's just a, uh, it's basically a, a switchback down to the, uh, low area where you can put in a kayak and a small parking lot. And, uh, it'll be EBA accessible for requirements of the grantees. So, we have an engineer on board who's not only gonna design it, but also, uh, do the project management portion of it, too. So, I think we're at a point where we're just reviewing different options, you know? I mean, I think the meeting the other day was, I wasn't there, you guys were, but when I hear it was everything in the kitchen sink, now we're gonna have to pull back and, and make sure it's just...
Great. How many cars do we park in this current plan?
I didn't ask Kurt the number, I just said, if you take that lot that's there right now and has been used as a turnaround by Snowplows and everybody for 50 years, what would, what would it cost to go in there and pay that? He gave me a price, but he never really identified the number of cars. I'm gonna guess, just based on their size, probably six, seven, maybe twelve or eighteen.
No trailers. Original grant, it wasn't at about 150,000 that was told to us?
Yeah, so it was one, I think 103, 107, somewhere around there, that we're having to match. Most of that will be in-kind in our taking, uh, time, equipment, materials. So, we're, we're trying to keep this at a point where there's no, like, actual cash outlay. We're gonna use our, our staff to do the payday work. And then, of course, um, my time gets doc, it's documented and charged against that as administrative and other staff members who are working on it, so hopefully we'll keep it to just the highway in-kind work that is county expense. Uh, this particular grant, we can match against the state grant, so that cuts us back even more.
The $12,000?
Yes. Yeah, it's not a lot of money and then also there's a, a grant that the Canal Corps has, they can apply for up to 150. Once we have designed down and we understand some costs, I mean, one thing that, that, um, we're struggling a little bit with early, we want to make sure we do this right, is we want this to be, it's a beautiful section of river, we want it to be accessible to as many people as possible. How do we create a way for someone who may be a little physically challenged to get their kayak back up to that grade? It's easy to get them down there, how do we help them get back up with their canoe or kayak? So, gonna maybe get a little creative about how that happens. That might add a little bit to the budget, which is where the other grant from the Canal Corps will be helpful. And we have two members though, uh, two staff members from the Canal Corps, not our advisory committee, so, uh, they're, they're kind of excited about it as well.
Dave, I'm not bad with kayaker, it'd be really easy to get in at Menado if there was a challenge, but, uh, I, I went down there, I don't tend to get invited to any of these meetings, um, so I went down the bank. Wow. How many trees are you gonna lose on that bank?
We are hoping not to lose any. One reason, among others, that, uh, this company stood out to us was that they came in, their primary pitch was, we like to work with the land, not against it. And so, um, we're hoping that we can minimize any loss of vegetation, uh, that, you know, isn't necessary.
Well, I worked with the project at State Route 48, flooding, and I was told at great length that when you take any forestry off the bank of that river, it can create turbid runoff, which is a serious DEC issue. I just, I just worry, I mean, I love kayaking and the river's great, man, that's a tough end, as far as I'm concerned.
It's looking like, uh, the best way for us to get down there is on the southern end of that parcel. If you're facing the river on the left side, uh, there's already like, uh, swale there and if we stay over in that area, um, there's less reason for us to take down any, uh, vegetation that would be holding the soils back.
Do like less want down, down?
Yeah, we haven't got to that point yet, but, uh, these guys have done a lot of trails on a lot of banks and the two people from the Canal Corporation are both engineers, so they understand also, you know, the hydrology of, like, the river and the, um, impact of sheet flow off of 41 and off of this parking area that we're gonna create on that...
Steve, they're gonna handle all, any permitting that we have to do as part of that?
Yes, they'll do all permitting, uh, construction design, bid documents, oversee. And one thing that we also, because this is a tricky, uh, project to some degree, we said, we want you onboard for a year afterwards to go back and make sure that whatever it is that we designed and built was done right, um, because our punch list doesn't end, you know, that day. The contractor will be aware that we're going through a couple of seasons to make sure that everything we build is gonna hold up. So that, you know, that has a little bit of cost, but we want to make sure it gets done right and it'll last.
My concern was I saw 115,000 or whatever and now it's being 12,000, it just seems like a big difference.
Well, 115 is what we were awarded and then we're gonna put in 115, so, uh, or right around there. And then, once we go through design, we'll know how much more we need for construction. With the trail itself, it doesn't cost that much, um, but making sure that it's accessible up and down is gonna add a little bit of money to it, so maybe going back next year for a little bit more.
Okay, so you don't have to deal with the restroom or anything like that? Thank you.
Any other questions, Steve? Not, I will look for motion. All second, by Mark, thank you. Any further discussion, question, first, yeah? All in favor? Any votes? Thank you, let's move on to the second one, resolution declaring activities proposed in the 1920s, more real grant application, type two activities under the secret program. Can I get a motion? Second. Troy, thank you. Let's have it, I'll handle it.
Uh, type two just means that there's no real environmental impact, um, there's certain criteria in the state environmental quality review program that triggers certain types of reviews and type two, uh, means it's like typical, you're gonna do the same thing it did before. We've already looked at things that may have been impactful and, um, it's not a huge acreage that's being impacted, you're not in any sensitive areas, so there's a list that, that DEC has for, um, deciding what area projects fit in, type two, so no real impact.
Any questions, Dave? Look, we do this every, every year when we fund this grant, or is this a new grant?
Uh, we don't do it every year and they haven't required it in the past, but they've started to, uh, asking for it, so we'll be doing it going forward. The only time that it would be, uh, something other than type two, if a new trial was proposed and they had to go out and take a look at, we could do that through the country.
Yes, David, uh, the access of the Emmenfield Bridge is still, may try to, so it's the, in that system.
Uh, as far as I know, yeah.
Some trails from the west side, get the east side. So I cross, we got... Any comments? For vote, all in favor? Any votes? Alright, let's move on to our review section of the resolutions for today. Amendment updates.
Yeah, just a few things, I'm gonna pass these around, this, we've been doing a lot more with video because that's what people are looking for. When they are making decisions about doing things, um, they, they go to video and it's more impactful to actually see something than folks just reading about it. So this is just a sampling, uh, of the many videos that we have out there, um, for your information. It's a wide variety, covers, uh, history, culture, uh, outdoor recreation winters on the fall. And, uh, David has been doing a lot more with, uh, a lot of our, we have a few really good local videographers who we work with and, um, we're kind of excited about, uh, the response that we've been getting to these as well. So, this isn't all of them, it's just a sampling that, one page would be enough for you to take a look at. And then the second one, uh, this is not as of today as it states up there, but it was as of the day that it was, uh, pulled, uh, a week or so ago in September. And it's just, uh, a sample to show you, uh, the social media activity that we've been working to grow. This particular one was, uh, Facebook likes and you can see from, uh, January, we're down, um, 2,000 now, this particular day, it had grown to going down to 13,000, so David, I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit about that or not. We use different measurement tools for different, uh, social media activities. This one is, uh, Facebook and it was probably through a specific, uh, program that we had lined.
I think this was specifically for the fishing page.
Fishing page?
I can't remember, I said it. Yeah. But overall, our strategy is just that basically to build an audience that will be lasting and this is a trend we're starting to see, I think, in tourism marketing, the marketing channel where actual brands are trying to create their own audiences rather than just go off the audiences and influencers and things like that. Idea is that then you make a post, instead of having to put money behind it, you automatically build that audience, are gonna get a lot of interaction, so, um, it was kind of a, last year we had done a lot of research on it, kind of went for it, um, and it's, it's...
So with, in general, I take care of things, but we're, um, right around 20,000 followers. Fishing page, uh, is a big part of that. We had a summer video that was out on Instagram where we had 32,000 plus views. And YouTube, uh, we've been building that playlist, so, um, it's, it's the way that marketing, especially tourism marketing is moving. There's some studies out there that say 65% of everybody who makes a decision about traveling has viewed a video at some point in that decision process, so, um, we're trying to build, build that and stay current with our efforts as well.
Uh, one question, when you show the, the growth, it's like, but we don't see what it was like last September, is this how it normally is or is this...
No, this is, this is...
Okay, you, you know what I'm saying, I'm not seeing what it was like in September to see if there was...
So this is the actual...
A spike.
Yeah, this is the actual starting page life, so that's a constant.
Okay.
That, that doesn't go up or down really and, and this is where right now, this is for, I just confirm this for the fishing page, so earlier this year we were in the, in, in the low thousands, now we're on the close 50,000, so that's, that's really...
Okay, alright, so last September we were nowhere near this type of thing, that's what I was looking for.
And when we started posting with our partners, videos about... And when we start posting with our partners, videos about shipwrecks underneath the water in Lake Ontario, these other numbers are going to grow as well.
Yeah.
And I think speaking from experience, adding your other sanctuary, right, if that comes to be, people love video and that brings them back to say, did you see that? You should go there and see that video. They don't say that about a print ad, hey, go get that magazine, do that story. And I'll disrespect that before a print ad's.
Do we have an underwater video of shipwreck available yet?
We have some footage, it's not ours.
There's, there's some footage and I know Noah made some in the spring when they visited, so.
I, I have to go look at it.
We have some from two wrecks that we can make available. We'll also be back next summer.
There's a little.
And there's a lot out there already.
Of our?
That could be.
No, I mean, not a, a, of our wrecks.
Of some, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's video of you under, that what we did in the underwater park.
Yeah, yeah, that's fifteen, twenty years old, so it's not high enough. I just, I, this, this year I purchased a lot of those underwater GoPros and I'm building a voyage on that. So I'm going to go back out and get some of my own and then we can use.
I would say. I, I just want to bring up, I'm sorry. We had a good year blend, which did a lot of, there's hundreds and hundreds of people came out to see that blend a good year for five days, it was there. I had no estimation, but it was people, bodies at the gates and stuff. It was quite a process, not that we know every year they're going to be there.
Now that didn't get any footage of shipwrecks, my understanding.
But it'd be great to take them, I think. It's so, so easy to do it.
It was interesting to see all the people who went to view that even from afar. I was driving down Silk Road one of the days that the blend was here. And there was a half a dozen cars parked on the side of the road and guys with their daughters and sons who are maybe six or seven years old, hanging on to the fence on Silk Road, looking over at the blend. Yeah.
Great, go ahead, sir.
You say that it's nowhere near what it was, I mean, last year is nowhere near, well, what was it last year?
Well, these are page likes, so just so they can have a Facebook page, it tends to only increase, right? Unless you unlike it.
Right, I kind of, I understand that. But you, you know, it was a statement that, well, it's nowhere near what we had. You know, last year is nowhere near what we have this year. So I'm asking, what was it last year? Do we have any picture that shows us what it was last year? That's what I'm asking.
We can, we can run analytic visuals for whatever you want, just at last ten years if you want, as long as we've had the page.
Yeah, I'd agree. I mean, you could just email around. I mean, it should be, I would assume it's going to be less than two thousand, I don't think, because again.
When, when I got here, I think it was well under two thousand. We were really struggling with getting that even above two thousand. And then the first year, we just didn't have a lot of content. So it, it didn't go up very much, but then it was always below this, right, this amount of that.
You think a, a start date that you'd like to see?
No.
He could run.
All right, okay. But, all right, the second part of the question is, is this part of what we had voted on, I think it was last month or the month before, where we were going to get into a, an agreement to tell us anytime somebody mentioned Swigaw County, that we would get feedback as to how many people are bringing in to Swigaw County. Is this part of that or is that not part of this yet?
No, that's.
Did you get that information yet?
That's just internal and you can see based on that, you really don't have a lot of information that just shows a beginning number and a ending number and the path in between. Melwater agreement, monitors, conversation as well as state statistics analytics if we ask for them. So anytime there's a conversation in the media about Swigaw County generated by us or someone else, we'll get a copy of that, what that was wherever it occurred.
If we started getting that information?
Yes.
Is there some way that we can start getting feedback on what that is outside of, you know, what you guys see in your, in your department?
Janning.
We can generate a report. Just the other day, over the weekend, there was like twenty-six conversations originating out of last night.
I just need it for the next two months.
We'll happy to send it to you about the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure he was.
Well, just exciting things that do come up in there, we could also share them, correct? So maybe, you know, knowing that they exist out there could also be a little bit more material.
That's one of the beauties of it is there, this, yeah. It discovers, helps us discover what people are saying about Swigaw County. And then in turn gives us more material to create content or share with people.
Dave, do you have anything else?
I'm working on taking a look at the Lake Ontario shoreline. There's been some conjecture that, based on where the lake level is now and what happened last year during the time period between September, October and March, that we could exceed the levels that we saw this past year, maybe even get to two hundred and fifty feet. And so I'm working with staff to develop some mapping so that people can take a look and say, if we hit two fifty, what does this mean to my property? And it's not going to be pretty. I don't know that we'll go there. I'm not a hydrologist, but our folks who have been watching this for a long time are saying that two fifty is potential. This would be a tool for folks to be able to understand better and plan ahead if it looks like we're having that way, what they need to do to protect their property. And then the other thing, the ready money, hopefully it could be as early as today or perhaps tomorrow that they'll make those announcements. The homeowners program became effective today for applications. I believe that marinas are being treated, anything that's not a municipal marina will be treated in a program similar to the homeowners. So they're all going to be taken care of, but there will be a process for them to actually make an application as opposed to process that we've gone through so far. And all the monies otherwise that, that would be announced will be for municipal where there's an agency development. Answering a lot of questions in the last five days and apparently, I hope their panties can solve as well because I don't think they sleep based on how many times they've contacted me.
Well, we've got a couple of questions, I've got a quick one too. Dave, I know many of us have related things as well, but you're on the inner circle there. Is there going to be information that come, when you say we should find out in a couple of days? The answers to those questions that we all have been asking, have you started to see those answers? Are those going to be, are those available or is that coming out with the release of being funded?
Yeah, so the answer is, no, I haven't seen any. The consultants haven't shared any and most of the things that have been a mystery remain a mystery. How does this happen? When did it happen? What's the process? One thing, I think the only thing that, that was questioned earlier was time period. And I believe they're looking at three years, so from the time of announcement, the goal is to have any of those projects that are funded done within three years. But I don't know that that's set in stone, that's what was shared with me, that it was looking like that. We'll see.
Chris? I've got a question from Ed and Marie.
Well, you touched on, most of my concerns, Dave's all were those mystery questions of, you know, hopefully after they get a feeling of how many applications come in.
Oh, why?
Maybe that's what they're waiting on to see what'll be allowed out of the twenty.
For seasonal.
Yeah, but you know, and then the other one, you know, the encad services. Estimated height, the, the two hundred and fifty feet, where, where did that number actually come from?
Uh, just conversations between these groups that have been, you know, preparing interest groups that have been watching lake levels for a long time and discussions about if everything were to be the same from twenty eighteen to, or yeah, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, if October, November, December, January, if they all look the same from precipitation, from lake management, from outflows, there's a chance that we might be higher than previous years based on where we are right now.
Yeah, it says like five foot higher. That's, that's, that's just.
Yeah.
Does anybody go to the college meeting Sunday at ten AM regarding water? The Lake Ontario St. Lawrence River Reliance, property owners can join. There were some brilliant people there. It's L O R S A dot org. They're planning with Indian River closing down the power, the nuclear power plant. They can make so much money on hydroelectric, like four plus million a day by keeping the river high, which is controlled into Samuel B. Moses' goddamn. So Lake Ontario unfortunately is an adjustable height lake due to.
The pressure.
Due to the dam, yeah. So they're basically sacrificing the south shore. They did that in nineteen fifty-three and there was a lawsuit that set a precedent. And the property owners warrant it based on like an eminent, eminent domain takeover. But anyone can join this and they had a brilliant team of property owners, hired some pretty slick people. And it's really worth the fifty dollars to join. And they're going forward with all kinds of things. But they claim, and I, I know at fifty feet, at two fifty and we've been there, it will take most of the south shore out with the proper storm waves. If you get anything over a ten foot wave.
Yeah.
It's going to be unbelievable.
And the, the lines that we'll show are at least strictly static. Here's two fifty, it doesn't take account wave action, wind or anything.
It took Salinger's house down, eight fifty-five thousand dollar seawall, island driven, every tree, the entire house, everything's gone. So, I mean, I think you stand to lose some money because you certainly can't tax at that rate. Yeah.
What was the name of that?
It's L O R S A dot org and you can join. And I, I, it certainly looks like a brilliantly organized group. And it was a beautiful meeting at the college last Saturday.
They've had other meetings in other regions of the lake. It's very.
The lawsuit happened in fifty-three, so it's been one before.
Thank you for that, Dave, there. When that does come out, I'm sure it'll be everywhere, but we'll get it on our Facebook or website.
Yeah, it'll be, when I, when we get it done, my, my hope is that we'll put it on the planning webpage and then it'll be an interactive document, so you'll be able to zoom into your property and see where that line is.
And then as far as the ready announcement goes, it'll be something we'll share on our Facebook or.
Sure, the governor's. As residents. When he hands out money, it's very well announced.
Oh, yes, it is. We grab it nice and quick, yeah.
Well, I think that.
Mr. McCann will cause this, not the state of New York.
Yeah. Every, every county was guaranteed fifteen million in projects and we had in excess of fifteen. Not sure if we'll get everything, but no one has said to me yet, by the way, we had to take this off your list. One thing that we did push really hard for, because we knew the seasonal property owners weren't going to be addressed under the original program. And because there was a lot of private roads that were being impacted along the lake shore and the only way that we could get those addressed was to have towns take them over and then build them to state highway stacks. In many cases, simply not, it's impossible to do that and other, it's not financially possible to do that. It's about like two hundred and fifty dollars a foot to take a dirt road and build it to low volume state roads back. So we pushed really hard and I think they're going to include it. These roads and, and some of these properties weren't being impacted by the lake and wave action, but many of them were being impacted from behind by state owned marshes that have also risen as a result of the lake being higher. In some cases, the wave action has closed down tributaries and creek outlets and so the, the natural flow isn't there. So we said, we'd like at, at least put some money aside for D E C or whoever to go and figure out how to keep these acting properly so that they're not flooding over private roads and homes and they agreed to do that, so hopefully they'll.
Is that in addition to the pool of mine that's already set up or is that coming out of that?
Originally, we said, take it out, you know, there wasn't a lot of money. It was twenty, forty thousand dollars for Deer Creek Marsh and Butterfly Shores. Joel Funtz Boulevard is a private marsh, but we said, you know, it still needs to be addressed. I don't know whether it'll stay in our pot of fifteen million or if the D E C will just take it out by themselves. But they've agreed that needs to be done. So it was the only way that we could get somebody to pay attention to those things that they had already said. We can't fund them, you can't pay to fix them. Go explore how to prevent more damage.
As far as information goes for the residents, that the window is open now for them to apply, is that something we can do on our side and the county side as well? Maybe on the website, Facebook, what are we going to do to get that out there to remind people? I'm sure you've talked to some folks and I think they have to go through their local municipalities.
You go through neighbors of water town, they, we can repost the original information that came out. I'm sure that the state probably will also push them to do it today.
This is totally controlled by the environment, they want to raise it back years ago. They want to raise the stuff with marshes, they're finally doing that. At the expense of all the people that got. They want to raise the water and the water is controlled by the conditions, how are we making all that? So there's a combination of problems there.
Well, that's exactly what we said, that the D E C, if they are state supported, planned twenty fourteen because it was supposed to make the lake and its environment more natural. And they were on board and now it's caused all this damage. If I was a property owner and you were next to me and water was coming off your property and damaging mine, we'd be in front of a judge and I said, the D E C is no different. So you guys are damaging your neighbor's property, you need to stop and raise money to that. So we'll see how much they decide.
Great, thank you, David. Good update there? All right, great, let's move on then. We are at, all right, Ms. Ellen Brody is here from Noah to give us an update. Thank you so much for coming to see us.
Thanks for putting me on the agenda. So I just wanted to give a couple of updates and answer questions, have a discussion, whatever, whatever comes up.
Don't say that.
You know what, I will answer, I'll, I'll, I'll go anywhere. Was it all the day yesterday or really it was the first meeting of the state agencies together? Department of State, Office of Generals, O G S, General Services, D E C, Department of Education. Office of, uh, Generals, O G S, General Services, um, D E C, Department of Education. So there were about twenty people who were involved, the state government is beast. Um, but it was, it was a great, a great first step, um, for them to learn more about sort of more the governmental functions because NOAA and the state are co-managers of the sanctuary because they're state waters, uh, state land and lands and will remain as such. NOAA doesn't take ownership over anything. So really good first step. Um, I think the next meeting will be more of a, a regional meeting with the state agencies because there are, are staff and leadership here in the regions that were not on that call. So that, that meeting was sort of an overdue meeting now. In terms of where we are in the process, we have sort of completed step one, which was to have, i- issue our notice of intent and to have our public comment period, public comment period closed on July thirty-first. We got seventy-five to eighty written comments and then had another thirty, uh, people, uh, provide oral comments at the public meetings. You know, no, no red flags, um, you know, most people, I don't know how many were at Oswego Public Meeting, but that was really, that was incredible. So most in support of it, uh, a few concerned about the accuracy of the shipwreck database and, you know, so we, we need to spin that up. So we did have a decision point, um, after the public comments, you know, do we continue with our designation process? And based on the public comments and our interest in this, we are moving forward. So that was never really in doubt, but in case you didn't know that there was a decision point, there, there was
It's good to hear.
It's good to hear officially. Yes. Um, so I think one of the biggest things that affect the, the community is that we decided to establish a local sanctuary advisory council. We have councils at every one of our sanctuaries. They're really critical to how we manage, um, our, our sanctuaries in terms of having the, you know, the key interests and players at the table. We had a pre-designation council at Thunder Bay, uh, twenty years ago. They were really important in really providing us, um, a set of comments that, that we had to address. We decided not to have advisory councils at, in the Maryland and Wisconsin, uh, proposed sanctuaries because we thought we had all the support we needed and it's, you know, it's the more you involve people, the longer it can take. So there's definitely a, you know, is it worth it? I think we wish that we had done councils in Wisconsin and Maryland, so we decided to do a Lake Ontario council. So we put out our notice, I think September seventeenth. Applications are due November first. And I don't know if you've seen the seats, uh, it's by law where we find, it's under our Sanctuaries Act. The seats are limited to fifteen total, um, but we can have a member and an alternate. So are you familiar with the seats?
Uh, I think they should.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, I, yeah, and this, this is all on our website as well. What this page does not have is the number of seats. Definitely have a couple that have two seats. So, yeah, the purpose of this is to get people that have, you know, multiple different perspectives, different points of view, um, at the table. We have probably of interest to you, we have economic, we have two economic development seats. And then we'll have two alternates. So if you have suggestions of, of people who are interested in this, I think we're, we have government represented as non-voting seats. So each county has a non-voting seat on our council. Um, other non-voting seats are the state of New York, the Coast Guard, uh, the Port of Oswego authority. So not that governments can't be on representing one of these seats, but I think there's some advantages to having, you know, business owners or, or other folks. So my ask of you, if, if you know people who you, uh, think would be interested and have valuable contributions to the, the conversation and to the, the development of this, please, please cast this on. All the information is on the sanctuaries dot NOAA dot gov backslash Lake Ontario website. The application, description of the seats, so. I have no idea what we'll get. I have a few inquiries, not many.
I was just gonna ask that, what the response has been so far, it's been a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, I've had two people reach out to me.
You need to promote it more than
Well, yeah, so I thought, I guess that's another
Cause out of the four counties, we should, you know, do a big emotional push and make love.
Yes.
And probably, I have a, uh, a database of people who are, who are letters of support that I can push this out to.
Okay.
Now, um, those who are interested, how do they, how do they reach out to you?
They can reach out to me email or call me. I, I think my information is also on the website. As far as the actual application, they have to either fax it to me or send it to me. There's some issues with personal information that they can't submit it on the website or can't email it.
What's the, what's the website?
It's, uh, sanctuaries dot NOAA dot gov. And then to get directly to the Lake Ontario, it's, uh, backslash Lake, Lake Ontario.
So when you're evaluating these, it doesn't have to be like evaluation of this specific person? Or could it be a rep, could a representative be like elected to represent a group of people? Like the charter captain association?
Yeah.
So that whoever happened to be the president or chairman of that would automatically be a member? Or do they have to, like, okay, Phil's the chairman, he decides he doesn't want to do it anymore. Next year, there's a new guy, does he automatically take Phil's place? Or would they have to reapply to fill that agency?
For the government seats, it's whoever the government wants.
Right.
But for the, you know, for the, for the recreational fishing, if there's, you know, uh, charter boat, I mean, that is an individual. So that does not get directly transferred to like the next president of the organization.
Okay, so if there's change in the guard, then they have to reapply to say, we want to take Tim's place because Tim's not the president anymore.
Yeah.
I'm the new guy and I take his place, you have to approve that.
Right.
Okay.
Are these advisory meetings open?
Yes, they are open to the public. Yeah.
Uh, what was the total number of seats again?
Fifteen seats.
Fifteen.
And then, so we have a member and an alternate. And when people apply, they can specify whether they want to be, you know, the full member or an alternate. I mean, some people want to be involved, but they don't want responsibility of being full. Some people really want to be the, the full member, so how often do you need? That is a good question. So what is this council going to do, I think it's We're hoping that the council will guide us in developing our proposal. And that can be contributing to, uh, information that we need for drafting our, our documents. It can be talking about uses on the lake, are there user conflicts? You know, so when you get divers and fishermen on the council, like, I, I, I'm not out for fishing, I don't know. So it's really getting that firsthand knowledge of issues that we should address. It's probably talking about our alternatives that we'll present in our environmental impact statement, which would most likely be focused on boundaries. So if we're looking at a couple of different boundary alternatives, um, it could be, uh, regulations, you know, how are we going to best protect the shipwrecks? Are we going to, uh, require, uh, are we going to eliminate the practice of anchoring at shipwreck sites? So it's helpful to have the council involved in that conversation. And they're really, we take councils very seriously on our program. They, they are not just, uh, you know, it's not just an act of getting people together for the sake of getting people together. I think we have a, a very good track record of that. So in answer to your question, how often? I'm hoping that we can have the first meeting in probably January, where are you? I don't mind, winter. And life goes on in winter. I would say probably every two months. Officially, we can also have working groups on our council and the working groups will probably need more reporting.
This is fifteen seats for throughout the four counties.
It is. Right. Yeah.
So sanctuary, we're meeting sanctuaries to all these people that are gonna be, kind of, no, no one here has any experience in those, right?
Right.
So maybe it'd be beneficial to visit one, like Key West has got the first meeting there.
Oh.
Here's how sanctuary work, program works.
Well, it is not a necessity that we have staff help people to other sanctuaries.
No.
You may have a little more interest in the group, for sure.
Well, sanctuary's gonna retire, so they'll have a retirement on their hands.
Anyway, we're excited about this, it does, it takes some work. Um, I think the first meeting would be really an orientation to sanctuaries and getting people on the same, the same page of, of, you know, what it is. Let's see, any questions, other questions?
If all this information that you're giving us, can you put that, have somebody email that to the legislative body with the information itself, the size, the requirements, the dedication, that type of thing? So that we have people in our area, I know people in the Plaski area that may be interested in it, but I have to let them know just what it is.
Yep.
Okay, that would be helpful with the website and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate that. All right.
Okay.
Later, we'll be here.
Okay.
Between Betsy and Janet. Make sure that the appropriate information gets to everybody.
Okay.
Okay, so it's another month, so for people to apply, we'll probably do, like, in two weeks, try to do a push.
I know when you and I talked earlier, this is part of the beginning of, uh, folks getting out and getting to know their communities around the four, four counties. So I'm assuming you're trying to set up, can you talk a little bit about, you're trying to set up meetings in the other counties too? And getting to know people and it's gonna be spread throughout the four counties, the same type of information, so the tough process.
So you're talking about, well, I think the council should meet in
I mean, what you're doing right now, so the beginning of a familiarization.
Yes, yes, it's a big hearing. Yes. Yeah, it's a big area. But it is very important for, for NOAA staff to have, uh, the pulse on, on what's going on and
I think our communities are excited, you should just tell them how excited we are.
Yeah, yeah. So in terms of timing, I mean, I really, you know, I get nervous about saying timing, but we are aiming to have our draft documents published next summer and I think that's ambitious. But that is our, our goal. This administration, the NOAA administration continues to be extremely supportive of this effort and want us to move forward. You know, it's like figuring out whether we will have the advisory council, like, well, it might slow it down, but it's really important. So we, we may have decision points along the way where we could, uh, make something perhaps more complex, but in the spirit of getting it done, let's just, let's just get it done. And we know from our experience that we're able to make boundary adjustments later if we want to expand into the Saint Paul River. Perhaps that could be a later thing rather than a now thing. And I'm sure that people here would rather have us designated than having this planning process carry on. That said, the planning process is really valuable to us and we're very committed to, uh, having local and state involvement to make it the best product. And, I mean, for me, if given the choice of it takes longer, but it's a better product, I'll, I'll do the better part. Couple other things, you talked about video. So we had a videography team up here last summer. And we have seen at the, the public meeting and we have seen other places, we had a two-minute, uh, video, just footage. We didn't have any words or anybody interviewed. But we do have, we did interview Phil and have other interviews and we are pulling that together to do what we call Stories from the Blue, which is, you get on our website and look at Stories from the Blue, we have a photo a day, we have, um, we have videos, um, so it would become a set. But that would also be something that, that we kind of promote the sanctuary. I'm not sure where it is in the, in the schedule of producing videos. I, I thought it was going to be this fall, but I, I don't think it is.
Well, fall just started, you got a lot of time.
Yeah, I know, I know. Sean, there's our videography team, they are, they're always off, so we're taking footage and not back in the office processing.
It's worth it.
I think, uh, an upcoming event is a congressional roundtable. NOAA has started having what we call congressional roundtables in, um, in coastal states. We're having one in Buffalo on October third, yeah. I hope that's on your calendar, Phil, still. Where we invite as most congressional staffers from the entire coastal area. But we talk about NOAA's products and services, but rather than us getting up, we'd like to have our partners talk about how they benefit from NOAA. So Phil will be part of, uh, of like the Coastal Communities Panel, along with someone from Buffalo talking about habitat restoration and how that's an economic development in Buffalo. I think there'll be two of you on that panel. We've done one in Wisconsin, we've done one in Michigan. It's, they're, they're really valuable and I'm really glad that Phil's able to make it to have, you know, have the sports presented to the staffers. And the last thing I'll say is, in putting together our draft documents, we, we have to, we have a section, a chapter on affected environment, which means we need to get information. So I don't know, I'm ready to get information on, you know, tourism numbers and how many recreational fishermen are using the lake, recreational boating. So I don't know if that's where the best place to go for, for that. Okay, excellent. So, so how do you, what, what is that database?
So, uh, New York State, uh, contracts with a firm, what's the name of that company, Jen?
It's Tourism Economics.
Yeah, they've been doing it for many years. They put out an annual report, most recent one published was twenty eighteen, so we can share that data with you. We also gather data from, uh, D E C with regard to, uh, license, fishing license sales. So we know exactly, uh, somebody bought a license here, you know, when they bought it, uh, where they came from, how many days they stayed, or at least how many days they purchased, uh, to be able to fish. So we can tell you pretty much anything. We don't have good data on recreational boating, but we do have a study that was done, uh, several years ago. It was funded by the Department of State and that was to take a look at recreational harbors and their impact in communities. And there's some data in there about recreational boating. The value of, example, as an example of charter boat in a marina in your town probably has an impact of about seventy thousand dollars a year. So they did dive deep on some of it and some is more general, but we can share that with you as well.
So you may have seen in some of the articles, listed articles about the economic impact of the sanctuary, they use numbers from Thunder Bay. Like crazy outrageous numbers, please do not repeat those numbers. They're, it's taken out of context, they're not, it's not right, it makes me, I, I just, I need to talk to Matt Wright about not, not using those numbers. I need to work with our program to get them off the website. It was, the context was regionally and it had really nothing to do with the sanctuary. But it makes me very nervous to have those numbers thrown around and the expectation that with the designation of a Lake Ontario sanctuary, there would be, you know, five thousand new jobs. Or a hundred million dollar economic impact. I mean, they're just, the numbers are, they're too high, they're not, they're not relevant to sanctuary designation. So just, if you see those.
So you're saying we, we can't hold to that?
At least.
Okay.
Appreciate your honor.
Yeah. I've been fighting with our program to get rid of those numbers on our website and they changed. They tried to provide more context, but it's still, it's a, it's a nuance. And when someone's looking at our website, they don't understand the nuance about, you know, the regional study and that it didn't look at the impact of the sanctuary, it just looked at economic development, tourism in that four county area. Yeah, any other questions?
Thank you again, thank you, thank you for coming to see us for the updates and again, we follow us, we're very excited about this.
Eric.
Yes, before we move on to the next agenda. All right, last on our agenda, here is the update from Mr. Trevel. You join us at the table here, sir? Not personal, you come here.
I didn't know I was going to get a new wardrobe.
Yeah.
I'm all set for next. Okay, good afternoon, good morning.
Frank had pulled that chair out for you to sit down.
It's okay. He knows he wants to be where he wants to be. I had to turn this off.
You keep an eye on Frank, I gotta keep an eye on you all the time. Okay, a couple things I wanted to report. Let me just press these guys around. Couple projects that the I D A has phased, hadn't been reported yet in this committee. Both of these projects, Maple Hollow Farms and CME Electrical Supply, both of them are in the town of Pampas. Both of them were funded with an I D A micro enterprise home program loan. To give you a little background on the micro enterprise program. We have the I D A operating study revolving loan fund that was originally funded by HUD for the micro enterprise. They're small loans, they're flexible in terms of how they can be used. The maximum loan amount is twenty-five thousand dollars, of which most of these projects were twenty-five thousand. The program involves multiple elements. One is that in order to be eligible for a micro enterprise loan from the I D A, the borrower, or at least one, one person associated with the company or business has to go through the micro enterprise training program. We partner with SUNY Oswego and the S B A and the Small Business Development Center on providing micro enterprise training. Most of the training courses are now held here in the city of Oswego at the facility that is jointly shared between the Workforce Development Board and the Chamber here in the city of Oswego. Normally, there's about thirty-five to forty people per year graduate from that micro enterprise training program. You're not eligible for this long program unless you go through and complete that course. In the case of Maple Hollow Farm, the person Rebecca Fowler, she took her course in 2010. And went to the course in 2010, making their business eligible. What they're doing is they're adding dairy related production at their facility. They're putting in a milk house facility. They're producing cheese curd, fresh mozzarella, cottage cheese, sour cream, those types of products. In addition to what they currently are doing with maple, maple syrup and strawberries and other products that they, they can do. Again, it's a micro business, it's only about two jobs. So about a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollar investment in the project. Additional financing that was secured for this project, it was a C F A. It received approval for a C F A grant from E S T C in the last cycle around eight. And it was also approved for a small grant from National Grid as well in their ag business program. So that's one of the projects. The other project is a new startup company, CME Electric. Again, this is also inhaleable. Individual graduated from the micro enterprise program in 2018. And Chris Edmonds, he's got a good background, eighteen years experience in self-employed electrician, eight years experience working as a state certified electrical inspector. It's a startup business, just made creating about a couple of jobs, a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollar investment. And again, twenty-five thousand all alone was approved primarily to be useful for capital or some change in that startup business. Any questions about the micro enterprise program and on those two projects?
My question about Maple Hollow Farm, so now they're just adding a milk house milk plant. They're not, and they don't have animals, no cows. They're not, is this, are they going to be milking the cows there or are they getting milk from another farm? They have cows there because I didn't see anything in that, what they produce here right now, they don't mention.
But they're starting, yeah, this is a new thing, I mean, they didn't.
Right, but they're going to start, but they're going to be milking cows there then?
In the future, could you bring one of those cows with you, please?
We had a picture of one of the cows in there, I need to bring it, bring it over.
I can bring a lot of bacon beef cows.
There is a picture online from 2018 of at least one cow.
I was just wondering because it doesn't say that they're presently doing any dairy and all of a sudden they're making this, that's a big investment.
Yes, right.
Right, how many employees do you have now?
Which one?
The first one.
Maple Hollow. Really, there's, there's only two people there now, so they're free to, so they have four after they create the jobs.
Maple Hollow is the one that I think it is, right now they sell eggs.
Yeah.
Mints or meats, I don't know what else. Thing is there, it is a very well-known family on County Route eighty-five in the Halle area. Their other, have their family has a fruit stand on one oh four and eighty-five. But that's foreign that I've never, that's, that's another, that is, that family in this family are not in the same business they got. It's great. I have no worries about this business producing what they say they're going to produce and doing what they want. Because they are, it's, it is very nice, right? And they, we have great eggs and everything else is good. Second one, and it's an electrical supply company. How many sales do they have to generate, fifteen thousand dollars sales tax?
Divided by four and eight. Divided by four and eight.
So I'm ready to do that quick jump to the top of the table. Hello, how much? Maple Hollow?
One zero means, sales tax same percent?
Eighty, eighty percent.
I would not be eighty-five percent.
How much?
About two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand dollars?
That was based upon the projections that, that the S B D C helped them put together for their, their business.
I just get worried about that.
That's a startup business.
This is startup business.
You're always, it's always a legitimate concern, a worry about a startup business.
My, my concern is not that we're, and I, I have no problem helping people to start this, but that's not my, that's not what I question, my questioning is. Okay, we're saying we have two, two jobs, okay? But if this business does not happen, it's in success, okay? It's not successful, it closes. When those two jobs come off, our numbers that we produce at the end of the year where we say we, you know, we brought in a thousand jobs, five hundred jobs. Because right now I'm looking at a startup business that we started up on Route three, Fulton, the hash, the mash, okay? It's about two years ago, I think it was. That's, was eight employees, I believe it was said that we were going to have six, sorry, six employees, six, eight employees. I, at that time I questioned the number of employees and how they're going to generate that much sales tax. And they're no longer in business, they've been out of business for almost six months now.
Now what, what project was this?
This was, this was the diner on Route three, going out of Fulton on Crosby Hill.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And I just looking, you know, what I'm looking at is just, I want to help people, it's great, we needed that diner there. That is a very focal point for people to get, you know, to get into a diner on, on Crosby Hill. But what I'm looking at is what we're actually saying that we're having for jobs is what I'm worried about, okay? Because I, I, I need to know exactly what we're doing. We're still with the poverty list and we're still on the unemployment list. And I see jobs going down to Dodge County in the numbers of a thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand seven hundred. And we're getting what they're not, which is a couple, you know, fifty or sixty here or there. K and N Foods, what is happening with K and N Foods?
They're, they're about the mid-fifties right now.
Mid-fifties. And that was, they were on a fourteen-year pilot agreement. And the reason I know so much about K and N Foods is because that's the reason I decided to run for a county legislator because it was said that the pilot agreement was thrown at Fulton, they had no choice in it. Fourteen-year pilot agreement. They were supposed to have between a hundred fifty to a hundred sixty or seventy jobs is what they projected.
Hundred eighty-three is what they projected.
What they projected, okay? And that's why the pilot agreement was given at such extent. City of Fulton was very, very excited, everybody knows that. We're looking at fifty jobs, fifty-five jobs, I think.
Well, you had zero there when Bertard left.
Okay.
Now, let, let me put it this way, in terms of K and N Foods, foreign country, came from a foreign country, new business in, in the States. They had a much more difficult time breaking into the market to sell their products than they had anticipated. They, that company created the fifty, fifty-five, sixty jobs that they have now. When they were struggling, really struggling in their startup mode, they kept their workforce that they hired instead of laying people off, they kept them. When they were in really losing probably a million, million and a half dollars a year in their books in terms of capital investment, they pumped into that plan, not just the acquisition of the facility, they pumped into that plan probably eight, nine million dollars in equipment investment. Ton of money there. To, from my perspective, relative to K and N, if I was K and N, it's not a president paper, if I was K and N, I, I question whether they should have continued at that type of bottom line. But they stuck to it. They're good people, they're trying, they want to make, make it work by selling off half of their, little half of their property to I freeze that will be coming in. That helps them significantly because they weren't using that. It was just a burden to the company, a financial burden to the company that wasn't being used. And, and I think K and N will turn around. Will they ever get to a hundred eighty-three jobs? I doubt it. Unless something dramatic changed in the marketplace in Canada, in the U S for, for their food. But could they still get up to high eighties, ninety employees? That's a possibility. And they're still trying to do that. I don't like to criticize a company for doing everything they can to achieve their goal. And if they fall short, get slapped in the face and criticized.
No, it's not criticism, yeah, I'm not talking about criticism, Trevel. What I'm talking about is business, okay? And you're in the business for business. And the fact is that the city of Fulton and Strick County is in the business for the taxpayers. And the taxpayers in the city of Fulton, okay, were looking at projected payroll, which would bring in people to buy merchandise, sell. The pilot agreement was a pilot agreement renegotiated or restructured because that, you know, the expectations are not there and they're not going to be there, okay? Is that a possibility or are we never going to do that when we are giving out pilot agreements with the expectation of bringing in all this payroll money and sales tax? And then it doesn't happen. And that's, that's my only concern. I'm not concerned, but I, I want to help everybody we can help. That is not what I'm saying. Don't get that wrong, say that I want to criticize that, but what I want to say is if this happens and you should be restructuring all, that pilot agreement should happen. And I know that that is one of the things the controller's office has said should happen, okay? And that's what I'm asking to have happen with any business that we have. If the expectations don't come forth, then, and it's not going to come forth, then we have to start restructuring the pilot agreements. I don't have any control over you, nobody in here has any control over you. But what I'm saying is that's what I would say we should do.
And that's a fair point and fair question is when, when, when a agreement is made with expectations and then there is, there's accountability to those expectations. And that's fair, and I know Mr. Trevel's office does put that together, there's a annual report. I want to thank you for coming to meetings like this where you can give that kind of background. Because it's easy for us to look at these and, and just read a name and especially if it's not in our backyard, to maybe not understand the significance of it. You know, bringing that kind of background to the folks at K and N and, you know, the way that they, that they did good business. You know, I appreciate that. But it is a fair question, it's a fair question to say, you know, when the original agreement was made, there was an expectation of a hundred fifty jobs. Now, would you have had at that point, if it was eighty, turned it down? Personally, I don't know that I would have, but I haven't looked at the numbers either. But I think it's fair to say, where do we stand on each of these? And I know you do, at your annual report, you do give an update on where we stand with a lot of the projects historically as well. So maybe can you speak to that part, Mike, it's just the?
Well, I mean, you know, the agency does, every year we, as part of our audit, we get confirmations from companies in terms of their jobs and their payrolls. That's evaluated and looked at every year. If there is a sign of significant failure for a company to satisfy and meet those goals, there has been cases and there will be a case, and I don't know whether it has been a case or not, in which we are terminating the audit on a project because the company failed to meet its job creation goal. That's been done, that's in process, and I'm not going to identify the company now because I don't think that would be fair, but that's in the process. So we're doing that. In cases of manufacturing companies. In cases of manufacturing companies, we have to look at things beyond a job projection. We have to look at things in terms of the reuse of a facility, what would happen if K and N leaves, how readily marketable would that facility be to get another company to come in and take over? You know, uh, I, I, I do believe, and I, in, in all my heart, I do believe that the K and N folks are doing everything within reason to keep that plant operating and keeping it stable enough where it can grow. And until, uh, you know, they expand their markets for their product lines and get more sales, you know, they're, they're pretty much handcuffed in terms of, of job growth. But they're doing, I used to hire conversations with them and meeting with them, we were there fairly frequently. They're doing that.
Uh, can we jump over your remarks, Mike?
Yeah, I also wanted to point out that the freezing complex that was included in this property is now taken over by I-Freeze. They are a plant, a company coming out of Savannah, New York, and they've redone a lot of all the freezing material, I mean, fire, freezing, freezers and so on, they're redeveloped. They intend to and hope to get, activate the railroad on that side of the earth, bring in product from rail, from the west, freeze vegetables and stuff. There's a, just think of that complex, what, they haven't got the eighty, ninety jobs, I-Freeze might add more. So, you know, Frank, I, and I can say this, you don't invest, you don't gain.
Yeah, it's not, I know about I-Freeze, okay? And I know about the rail, right? I was instrumental, not instrumental, but I wrote letters, okay, to all, all the federal representation in our area to meet with I-Freeze and CNX and the city of Fulton to be able to open up the railroad on the west side, okay? And one of the ones that would, could make it was, uh, that, I can't think of her name right now, she ran for president, dropped out, she couldn't make it to the meeting. But we are working.
Godwin.
Godwin, yeah. She, you know, we are working on getting that open. I'm not talking about the works, I'm not talking about not, you know, giving it, all I'm talking about is restructuring and making, you know, the counts, actual counts, not counting that we're, we promised you, I mean, it's like a football coach. I'm going to give you, you know, a ten-win season this year, every year I'm going to give you a ten-win season, give you an extra amount of money, I'm going to give you a ten-win season, and he, you, you only win five games a year. Well, soon or late, you're going to restructure your, your program with that.
Just ten, ten wins and two games.
Right, that's right, well, that's, you know, but that's, that's what I'm saying, you know, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for actual numbers of employees that we're getting, jobs that we have, sales tax that we're getting, if we're not getting it, then we have to start restructuring it. I'm not saying close somebody down, I'm not saying don't give it to them, okay? What I'm saying is, let's get things in order so that what we're saying is really right there, okay? That's all I'm saying, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a three-part question. What year are they in of the pilot right now?
You didn't?
Yeah.
I started from five, six. Six, seven.
Six or seven of fourteen. Did the sale of that portion of the property to the other property?
Everything was reallocated based upon the sale of the, because over fifty percent of the asset value of the property went to I-Freeze.
Okay, so, so it has.
The pilot, the pilot.
So, the pilot has adjusted.
Was restructured based upon that sale, and I-Freeze has picked up. The net increase in pilot payments between the two is essentially greater than it was in the K and N.
So, they were able to actually create a new pilot for the second company for the remainder of the original pilot?
I-Freeze has a pilot.
They basically took it over?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, Mike, you're saying it's actually, it's actually the sum.
The sum of the balances is that way greater than the sum of the one.
Okay, so, and then, so really then you're bundling the number of jobs that I-Freeze has into that same pilot agreement, original amount.
You're speaking geographically.
Though, if you want to look at it that way, you can, but I mean, we, we treat them separately.
You treat them separately, but now, you know, with a smaller facility and a smaller pilot for K and N, the expectations could reasonably be adjusted down as well. Doesn't that make sense?
Yeah.
Doesn't that make sense?
Actually. If half of it is gone, then half of the jobs are closed.
So, then the last part of the question becomes, how many, how many jobs, what was the year that the hundred and eighty-three jobs were predicted, and should we not then?
They were predicted, seven years ago, were predicted within five years. That's what they predicted to the state.
Okay, but they're at fifty now.
Fifty.
So, they sold almost half of the property?
Over half.
Over half the property, they're within a reasonable number of employees because half of what they predicted was going to be ninety, but, uh, you know, it's less than half, so they're only twenty or thirty jobs off of really what they should have been. If we adjusted the pilot for, for the amount of property that they own, why shouldn't we have reduced the expectations for the number of jobs as well? And so, to me, all of this is completely reasonable and within, uh, you know, is, is appropriate.
Great discussion.
Disagree.
Yeah, it was, it was very good.
Oh, that's great discussion, it's encouraging to hear these stories, that's, thank you for the questions.
Well, I think that's what makes it make more sense, I mean, if you talk, you know, but it's not the same original pilot anymore. It has been restructured, which is good.
That's good, thank you. Mike, did you, you have the next one?
Oh.
Any other questions on anything? Go ahead, next sir.
Uh, just a quick update on round nine of the CFAs. Today, on November one, the progress report will be submitted through the regional council to the state for this round. In the application process, there were forty-five projects regionally for E S T C funding, a hundred and seventeen projects for non-E S T C funding, CFA applications. Five projects for E S T C was from Swigler County, that's eleven percent, twenty-three of the hundred and seventeen, basically twenty percent for the non-E S T C projects. Most of those were either D E C or canal-related funding. And the timeline is basically the same. We anticipate that the state will announce in early December which projects, CFA projects will be funded in this round. I expect that since the progress report was prepared and submitted today to the state, that that would probably be, I don't know, post standard, you can fix that up in some big article, and usually they do it in the Sunday papers, so those projects, uh, for the region that are defined as priority projects. Priority projects are defined only for deep funding of our state development. It's not, all the other state agencies don't get that priority listing. They all get stored, and they're all, scores are all submitted to the appropriate state agencies that fund the projects, but the only E S T C projects have to be given a priority status in terms of being funded. So, that, that went.
I have a question for Ryan.
Do you have a total, total number of projects that were in Swigler County and about the total ask? Any idea?
There were five projects. Total ask, I think, was around two million, two and a half million, something like that.
That's just E S T C?
E S T C.
That doesn't mean parts of projects.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a lot bigger numbers. I mean, there are several D E C related projects where they asked for a couple mil for some projects.
Okay, I got it.
The D R I, just to touch base on that, it was announced on August fourteenth. Fulton getting the winning ticket this year. We had a kickoff meeting last Wednesday, September twenty-five, with state officials and, and the consulting firm that would be doing the work that were assigned by the state to Fulton is Cameron Engineering. They're the same group that did Portland, the city of Portland, two years ago. We had a good meeting with them Wednesday last week. Included in that meeting was, it was really a kind of an educational meeting for the two co-chairs and a small core group of about five people from, that was part of the D R I team that got the D R I application together. That's what the state asked for. And, uh, and there were about six people down from the state, from Cameron Associates, from Department of State and from H C R, were all at, at that meeting. The purpose of that meeting was going to go over the process and ask questions back and forth to revisit the application and discuss the application and discuss the... Now, Fulton, unlike earlier applications that I've seen from, from the region, Fulton had a very comprehensive list of projects, twenty-six projects in their D R I application. I think as this process moved ahead over a number of years, particularly if you put together four applications, you can start stacking those projects together over time, and you could do that in the earlier rounds that were usually about four or five critical projects were identified by, by, by the application, and then all the rest of filling projects were developed throughout the process. Now, as things got more time involved in it, Fulton was able to put together a very good comprehensive laundry list of twenty-six projects. Now, does that mean that all those projects will get some funding? There will be an opportunity, and that will be determined by the local planning committee that's presently in the process of being formed. There will be still opportunities for other companies or businesses or individuals to put together a project for a piece of property physically within the boundaries of the D R I that still could be evaluated and still could be considered for D R I funding. Because the final funding isn't determined until after the entire planning process goes through, which will take probably about six months or so to get through that process. And at the end of that process, there is a investment plan that is formed, and that will include all of the final projects and allocations that will be made and the numbers associated with that, and that will be the end game, that will probably hopefully. I think the process is moving a little bit faster, I mean, it seemed like Swigler took some pepper, though it wasn't any big in terms of getting things done with the state. Now, I think they're a little bit quicker in getting through the planning process now. And we, we hope by end of the summer next year that, that process will be, be completed. And then words can be made and projects could, could be in. The planning committee, what the state, you mentioned fifteen people in your committees, that's what they are asking for, between twelve to fifteen or so on the planning committee. The state picks that planning committee. We have been working with the, with the, with the core group to identify individuals that we are recommending to the state to be included in that, on that local planning committee. But the state has the final say as to who will be included. There are specific requirements on that planning committee. One requirement is, one person on the planning committee has to be a member of the Central Regional Economic Council, and that person's the co-chair, and I'm that person for Fulton. And the other member is usually the mayor is the co-chair, but the mayor has delegated that to Don Patrick, the president of the county council. And so, Don and I are the co-chair. We expect, hopefully by Wednesday of this week, the state will kind of have reviewed, they need to slate individuals that were submitted to them and add, who they want to add to that list, and hopefully we'll have a local planning committee identifying, hopefully by, by the end, end of this week. And there will be a meeting of the local planning committee, the first meeting will probably be around, in October. Those meetings will be double-sized, there will be open meetings, and, uh, and that will kick off the planning process with the D R I. There will be, in addition to the local planning committee, there will, there will be some city employees that will be delegated as staff, like Joe Figuera will be with Fulton C D A, he will be a staff person to the local planning committee. And there will probably be two or three other staff people of the city of Fulton that will be also staffed to the D R I committee. So, that's where that is, and it's pretty, pretty exciting, and I think there's going to be some, you know, some good projects coming up.
Uh, Mike, not to rush you, but we are going to be kicked out of here in eleven minutes.
Eleven minutes.
So, I just wanted to give you.
You got this, okay, we're done. This is a brochure, this is a brochure we, we put together to promote the airport industrial park and anticipation, so we're like getting out there and, and making that property more marketable. It was all done, also done in conjunction with a development promotional piece on the U A S Symposium that was held at Turning Stone, that's last month.
And that's the unmanned aircraft.
Yeah, and, and also included in this is a joint ad that was used, the promotion materials that was used with the U A S Symposium that we partnered with Big Turn. I'm going to say something about the people that are there.
Yeah, I'm specifically airport manager, Brandon was there both days. Mike's organization had someone there on Tuesday with Brandon, I was there on Wednesday with Brandon, and made a lot of contacts with some of these companies that are in the business, learned some incredible things about what's happening, Tracy and, you know, the Jetsons. I think that kind of stuff is being developed as we speak. One, I, not positive I have this number right, but more than a hundred companies have invested over a billion dollars in unmanned people, there's basically many airborne taxis or buses that will move people from place to place, not pizzas and UPS packages, but more people. It's really, it's beyond what I remember talking about a couple years ago, where your prescription, like, gets delivered to your house. I'm being a pharmacist, that'd be, so, it's crazy stuff.
That's great. Uh, Frank, you have a question next, sir?
Two things. Looking at it in the minutes, I, I wasn't here for the minutes, approval of minutes, but I said the legislature chat would like to see the numbers regarding pilot programs along with the industries that have pilot extensions.
that have pilot extensions. Chairman Stahl suggested the committee part this in discussion about a month ago.
Yeah, she was going to reach out to the gentleman who's here, the chairman of the I D A, for that information. I have not heard from her whether or not she was able to receive it. So it is still open, and she was not absolutely got that conversation. She hadn't got the opportunity to put it on the agenda. But if it is, if it's requested to be, that's...
That's what she's looking for, she's looking for numbers.
Yeah, and I know the officer gave her his cell number to reach out, but I just haven't heard she did it. That is available, I guess.
The second item is just the past, uh, two weeks ago, two weeks ago we had the NICE Act. And I went to the E D P meeting. Do we have anybody on the E D P committee for NICE Act? I think it would be in our best interest for us to have a member from the city of County, the I M F committee, it's very, and I mean, it's important to us because we're always pushing for everything. They have power and can ask for things, and we must have either a chairman or a vice chairman to be there.
Yeah, I was on the, on the air filter committee, but we'd meet at different times, so I could go on.
Yeah, it would be good, I'm just, that's all I got to say, thank you.
I, I just wanted to comment. Alex, you brought up the economic impact statements for Mr. Ture. I didn't want to leave the impression of no economic development as a result of the section. Clearly, an interpretive center with thousands of visitors, there's that economic issue. Rebranding and developing a generation economic activity. It's just like anything else, it's like our sport industry. We have what's considered, well, many have said, the best sport industry in the northeast. Will there be no economic development out of that country? There being no economic development out of that if we didn't utilize it? That's how you utilize it. County is marketed for the state's investment, actions, businesses, same would be true with the sanctuary. Economic development, that would be what we make.
That's a good question. Anything else? If not, I'll look for the question, sir. Question, second?